Good evening, everybody. We're going to go ahead and call to order the County Planning Commission for April 22nd. If you'll please call the roll.
Yes, members Borja.
Here.
Corona Sabanano, Devlin.
Here.
Raythal.
Here.
And Conklin.
Here.
We do have our forum.
If you'll please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you'll please make the announcements for this evening.
Yes, and I apologize if you'll give me just one moment, please. I'm so sorry. Announcement to the people here. Give me just one sec. The county fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The commission does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating may be limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. To make an in-person public comment, please complete and submit a speaker request form to the clerk, and each individual will be invited to the podium to make a comment. Members of the public may send a written comment, which is distributed to the commission members and filed in the record. Contact information is optional and should include the meeting date and agenda or off agenda item number to be sent as follows. Email a comment to boardclerk@satcounty.gov, and please feel free to mail your comment to 700 H St., Suite 2450, Sacramento, California 95814.
Thank you. If you please call item number one.
So your item number one this evening is for a zoning ordinance amendment and administrative The supervisory district obviously is all, and the applicant is the County of Sacramento, Division Planning and Environmental Review, and the environmental document is a notice of exemption. We do. Metro, can you pull up the first presentation, please? Thank you.
Perfect. All right. Good evening. My name is Jacob Daw, and I'm an associate planner with Planning and Environmental Review. The item for you today is a zoning code amendment package to implement changes in state law that went into effect on or before January 1st, 2023, into our zoning code. So over, really since probably around COVID, due to staff shortages and kind of changing priorities, we haven't been able to do one of these kind of legislative updates. So we're trying to capture everything that's kind of impacted our code, even a couple of bills that were passed back in 2018. So all of the bills and the amendments that we're proposing here today are kind of the minimum needed to ensure we're compliant with state law. There's nothing else in here that was kind of county or staff-initiated. Everything in here is just to make sure that we're consistent and in full compliance. So like I said, we are going back a couple of years here, so we have kind of a big amendment package. So we're going to be amending chapters three, five, we're proposing to amend chapters three, five, six, and seven of the zoning code. This slide here is a table showing a summary of the amendments organized by topic. So we have all the state legislation or the state code that is kind of spurring these changes. The zoning code sections we're proposing to amend, again, organized by topic. So I'm going to be going through in this presentation topic by topic, kind of giving a brief overview of the legislative action and the zoning code and how it kind of impacts us here at the county in our zoning code. And I've got a lot to get through, so at any time, feel free to jump in, interrupt, ask questions, clarification, anything like that. So with that, I'll go ahead and dive in to the first topic, and that is multifamily housing in commercial zones. So two bills here that are structured very similarly and are trying to get at the same goal of allowing multifamily development by right in any zone district that allows for office, retail, or parking as permitted uses. Both of these bills have a lot of additional criteria, including locational requirements in addition to that zoning. Can't be located near like industrial uses or being used for adjacent or on the property. Many cases, they have to have income-restricted units, so deed-restricted, affordable units, and some pretty intensive labor requirements, so paying a prevailing and skilled wage and having a, or having a skilled workforce and paying a prevailed wage, excuse me. So in terms of actual impact to us here at the county in our code, we actually don't expect these bills to have a ton of impact on what we do here. The two most common commercial zones in the county are like commercial and general commercial, which both of those zones allow for multifamily by right already in our code without all those additional requirements coming from the state. There's some potential for them to go into maybe the office zones or the industrial zones, but again, you have to meet all of these extra requirements. And for example, in the BP, the entitlement's already pretty low. So we anticipate most developers to go through kind of the county process rather than this state one. And that's evidenced by the fact that I don't believe we've actually received an application trying to use either of these bills to date. So we're just going to be amending to, proposing to amend our code to kind of call out these bills, show that there's a path, but again, we don't expect a ton of impact. Development standards for ADUs. So the state, as you're well aware, requires us to approve ADUs and has kind of a host of standards that we are required to approve. They make kind of tweaks and changes to state ADU law pretty much every year, and so we're trying to do some catch-up here through January 1st, 2023. So that includes allowing ADUs taller than 16 feet in circumstances. 16 feet, for the most part, is kind of the maximum height we currently allow. Some clarifications regarding junior ADUs, both of which are kind of already in practice here at the county. We're just amending our code for ease of implementation. And then the main change we saw is that they're going, they're requiring us to allow for deviations to front and side street yard setbacks to accommodate an ADU up to 800 square feet in size. So essentially what the state is saying is if you have a lot that's either too small or it's already, you know, has some structures on site, or maybe the topography makes it prohibitive to fit the ADU like in the rear yard, we have to allow for a deviation to that front yard setback to accommodate an ADU up to 800 square feet, and that has to be an administrative process. So we already, we've already implemented this. We process them as planning director determinations to kind of review the case that's made, understand that maybe there's not enough space on site, and then make that deviation. Wanted to pause here just in case there's any questions on ADUs. I know the ADUs come up a lot, so I wanted to pause here in case there's any questions from the commission.
Do we have set ways to evaluate whether that, because to me, it's like, well, if it doesn't fit, we're going to bend the rules and make it fit. How do we, how does the planning director determine whether we go to a zero-foot setback or allow an ADU in the front yard?
So the state, of course, doesn't really provide us a lot of good guidance on that. So we do have to use a little bit of discretion there on seeing, you know, if there's other, if there are other opportunities on the site to fit this AD somewhere else that maybe they just isn't preferable to the applicant. They'd rather it in the front yard rather than, you know, having to move some shrubs or something around in the rear yard. Also, again, we can only allow right up to 800 square feet, so if, it would be pretty unlikely we'd get to like a zero-foot setback because likely having to go probably, you know, into that 20-foot required front yard, you'd probably be getting an ADU that's larger than 800. So it's allowing a deviation that's just big enough to get 800 square feet of habitable space. But in terms of a process, we don't really have a good guidance from the state, so it's kind of up to staff discretion to see, you know, are there options on this site? Is it really prohibitive what they're proposing? We kind of just evaluate that on a case-by-case basis.
But economics is not part of that. It's like, oh, it's too expensive to build over here, so I'm going to build with a one-foot setback over here.
Um, I don't believe economics plays a role. So we've had two requests since this law has been in place, and in both those examples, basically staff using GIS will take an 800-square-foot box and see if there's areas elsewhere on the property that will fit. One of them, there were three or four, maybe more, places in their backyard. They just didn't want to use those areas, so we denied that request. Another one, we approved with some modifications where we were like, okay, you, because of how their lot was, was sized and where their house was angled, we did allow it to go in the front, but not exactly where they wanted. We wanted to, there was ability to kind of maneuver it a little bit back farther from the street and the neighbor and kind of work it out that way. But as far as I'm aware, economics is not one of those. It's physically prevents it from, our development standard is physically preventing it from being in the backyard where it's supposed to be.
And I'm assuming life safety is still an acceptable reason to deny, so we're having fire review these and, or just planning director consult with fire? I'm just looking at, that's kind of my understanding of why we had setbacks originally was so we could make sure that we could rescue somebody out of a window.
Yeah, they would still go through the regular, we don't normally condition planning director determinations, so they would still go through the regular building permit process, and if there are any fire concerns or building code concerns there, that would hold them up certainly. We wouldn't be overriding any health and safety codes for those.
Thank you.
Sorry, just for clarification, only two have been requested or only two have been approved?
Only two have been requested. One we approved with a slight modification, and the other one had multi, it was a very large lot, and there was multiple areas they could place an ADU in their rear yard.
Okay. Thank you.
Keeping with ADUs, this is regarding short-term rental and ADUs and junior ADUs. So state law is very clear that ADUs created on or after January 1st, 2020 have to be used for rentals of 30 days or longer, but they leave some discretion up to cities and counties if they want to allow ADUs before that date. That's just kind of the date they impose that law, so that's kind of the cutoff. Because state law's been silent on short-term rentals and ADUs prior to 2020, as well as the zoning code, we have been approving those short-term rentals, provided they provide, you know, evidence that the AD was permitted, so building permit, certificate of occupancy. So we're just proposing to kind of codify that practice in the zoning code. Junior ADUs as a concept were not created in state law until January 1st, 2020, so it's not possible to have a junior ADU permitted before that date. So we're going to make it clear in the code that short-term rentals are not permitted in junior ADUs under any circumstances. Off-street parking. So two bills here related to parking. First is AB 2097, which states that all projects located within a half-mile of a major transit stop, as defined by the state, are not subject to minimum parking space requirements, off-street parking, except for, you know, any required ADA or EV chargers. Although major transit stop, typically, there's a couple of different definitions. The one that impacts us the most is bus rapid transit, so BRT. And so major transit stop is any planned or existing or planned major transit stop is, project can qualify if it's within a half-mile of that. So using the, I always forget the acronym, essentially, the SACOG, SACOG has a database of all existing or planned transit stops through 2040, comes through the regional transportation plan, and so we kind of use that as our data set to determine projects that are eligible under this bill. The second one is for religious institution-affiliated housing projects, basically a housing project on a site owned by a religious institution. The slide is slightly incorrect here. It's not that they're not required to provide replacement parking, but if a religious use wants to put a housing project on site, we can't require parking up to 50% or to have that parking replaced up to 50%. So let me rephrase that. If there is a church use on a property, because this bill has a lot of exemptions, if there's a church use on a property, they want to put a housing project there, they're allowed to eliminate 50% of their spaces, we can't tell them to go find them somewhere else. We just have to let them eliminate 50% of their spaces for the church use. They don't have to replace them. They're then, we then can require one space per residential unit. So if they have a 20-unit apartment complex on a site with a religious use, we can still require 20 spaces for that 20-unit apartment complex for kind of a net of 70 spaces. Took me about two days to parse through the bill to understand what the state was trying to say. So I'll pause here for any questions on these two parking bills, provide any clarification if needed. Moving on to state density bonus law. So this is another law that the state pretty much tweaks and changes just about every year, and this is a section of state code that tells us, you know, what percentage density bonuses we have to grant, the number of incentives and concessions that we have to grant for affordable housing projects. So we're just making, proposing some changes here that will tweak the affordable housing incentive program, which is our version of state density bonus law in the zoning code. So that includes some definitions and term updates, modifying some of our parking ratios to match state law, and including shared housing buildings. The key change that we saw here in state density bonus law is that they removed a clause from the code that states that we can no longer evaluate projects for adverse impacts on the physical environment. So what that means for us at the county is we were requiring all affordable housing projects that wanted to use state density bonus law to go through a development plan review, and it was a discretionary action, so that way we could do that environmental review. With the removal of this clause, we can no longer do that environmental review, so we're going to be moving these projects to a non-discretionary design review. So we're going to still be evaluating for development standards, compliance with state law, but we won't be doing that, that CEQA review. Wanted to pause here for any questions on state density bonus law or that last piece that I just talked about.
This is probably a good time to bring up the public comment letter we received and address any questions. It looks like there's a different legal interpretation that came over questioning this interpretation of state law.
Yeah, I got a chance to look at the comment letter, actually, just a few hours ago. We committed onto my desk. Staff does disagree with that interpretation. They mentioned that there still should be review for public and for health and safety. Staff don't agree that that's necessarily a definitive trigger for CEQA. There's an additional clauses within state density bonus law that state that the utilization of state density bonus law or trying to get a density bonus or an incentive concession in and of itself is a discretionary action. So the state's clear on that, that that's not discretionary action solely to try and get that density bonus. So kind of by default, if it's not a discretionary action, it won't become a project under CEQA, and it has to stay ministerial. I did some quick research after I saw the comment as well and found a guidance letter that HCD actually provided to the city of Glendale. Their issues are a little bit different than what the commenter stated here, but it essentially stated the same, that there shouldn't be a discretionary requirement for affordable housing projects, and these should stay ministerial actions, so that way there isn't any, as we're mandated to approve the concessions incentive or density bonuses.
I like her interpretation a lot more than I like your interpretation.
I understand.
But that's consistent amongst council, too, that...
Yeah, I agree. I haven't seen the letter.
Okay.
But I have no reason to disagree with that explanation.
Yeah, I guess, the way I understood the point is, is that the concessions or incentives are not discretionary, but that doesn't necessarily exempt the project from being discretionary.
So there are, it's, so I guess there are still ways to trigger CEQA through an affordable housing project. It's not a, doesn't mean it's kind of a get-out-of-jail-free card for everything. So for example, if another entitlement is required for the project, that would trigger CEQA then. If there's a subsequent grading permit, you know, they receive their non-discretionary design review approval from planning, they still have to trigger CEQA through a grading permit. So there are still other ways where CEQA will be triggered, but the sole act of having an incentive concession or granting that density bonus doesn't become a discretionary project. There has to be, there's usually some other type of action that would then trigger CEQA.
And the way we're modifying our code still allows for that triggering of CEQA?
Yes, correct. So if there's any, any type of accompanying entitlement, like you said, if there's kind of a post-approval, like a grading permit, CEQA is still triggered there. We're not proposing to modify that. It's just when, when they're complying with all other codes, and really, the only ask for us is that they want to get that density bonus, we're required to approve that through state law.
Okay, I'll keep reading, and I may come back to that one in a second.
No problem.
Any other questions from anyone else's interpretation? All right, we may come back to that one, but carry on.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead.
We are familiar with the authors of the letter, and they have actually commented on a project we are currently processing. So the Planning and Environmental Reviews Division, county council, has been reviewing this issue, and so it's consistent with what Jacob has shared. So this is already being vetted through our, through our two other county council members as well.
Thank you for sharing that.
All right. Move on for now, a few more topics here, and then we can circle back, of course, if needed. EV chargers. So these bills are a couple of years old, but the state has stated that EV chargers are exempt from all local codes and ordinances, including the zoning code and the county code, so tree ordinance, setbacks, landscaping, essentially anything that's not health and safety. So they can kind of, kind of put them wherever they want. And they also state that EV chargers count as one parking space, which kind of makes sense. You just kind of stick an EV charger at the back of a space. But I believe AB 1100 states that ADA-accessible spaces count as two parking spaces. So we're just making those modifications in our code to make sure we're consistent there. And again, these have been state law for a couple of years now, so they've already been kind of in practice and in place. We, you know, so they come to planning during building permit review, but the state said there's not much for us to do anymore. So we're just making sure that's clear in the code. Hydrogen fueling stations. So that same standard that I said for EV chargers, where they're exempt, the state is now applying those to hydrogen fueling stations. So exempt from all local codes and ordinances, except for, you know, the building code and health and safety, but a couple of extra criteria for hydrogen fuel. The site has to either be zoned, industrial or commercial, or it has to have previously been developed as a service station or a gas station. And the state also very narrowly defines hydrogen fueling stations to just the equipment used to store and dispense the fuel. So if they can just the pump and the tank, that's, that's holding it together. Anything else that they want to propose on the site? Because hydrogen fuel pumps kind of look more similar in character to like a typical gas station, but everything else on the site still has to be zoning code. So if they want a canopy over it, convenience store, if they want to do anything else you normally get with a car wash, or with a gas station, like a car wash or the air pumps, and if they want to provide other fuels, so regular gasoline, then they would just kick them into the gas station territory. So it's just the hydrogen fuel equipment that gets exempt here. Two more. Family daycare homes. So as a reminder, family daycare homes, these are kind of the small sale daycare homes that you'll see in somebody's home. Currently, the zoning code to match state definitions kind of has small and large family daycare homes. The distinction is kind of between how many kids are being supervised. And the zoning code has a couple of extra regulations for large family daycare homes, like extra parking, some separation requirements. This bill says that we can no longer distinct, make any distinction between the two, and in fact, family daycare homes have to be treated just as any other residential use. So if it's in a single-family home, whether it's being used as just a residence or family daycare home, the same regulations apply. So we're just proposing to remove our daycare home, our extra daycare home regulations for the, for the large facilities. And last topic we have here are sidewalk vendors. So this bill is a few years old, but it, the bill essentially prevents cities and counties from outright prohibiting sidewalk vending within the right-of-way or within public parks outside of residential zones from operating. So we have to allow them to operate, they still have to get a health permit, they still go through the environmental management department for a permit and all that. We're just not going to be regulating them in the zoning code. We don't have a lot of purview over the right-of-way in the zoning code, we have a little bit of purview over public parks, and sidewalk vendors would be considered a temporary concession, which needs a temporary use permit to the planning commission. So we're just going to be exempting sidewalk vendors from that requirement. They still have to go get their health permit and meet, you know, all health code requirements. They're just not going to be in the zoning code. So that covers all the amendment topics. If we wanted to discuss or have any questions on those, and I can, before I get into a quick summary on the outreach we did, and then staff recommendations.
I've just got one more question. I think I'm comfortable with the density bonus law and how it's written in our code, so thanks for that explanation. The other question is, it's just kind of cropped up. It looks like low income is 60% of AMI and very low income is now 50% of AMI?
Yes, that sounds right. These change so much that looked at it well, but yes, they changed those around a little bit. So yeah, low income, I believe now is down to 60% per how the state defines these categories. Very low stays at 50. Yeah, I believe that's, that's, those are the changes to me last time I looked at the state code.
Okay. So low, there's not much difference between those two nowadays?
Uh, no, doesn't look, doesn't appear to be so, no.
Okay.
So as far as outreach goes, since these, all of these proposed zoning code amendments are required to ensure compliance with state law, we didn't go to every single CPAC to ask for a recommendation vote. We notified all the CPACs that this amendment package was coming. We offered to provide an informational presentation to let them know the proposed changes we're making and answer any questions. So five CPACs took us up on it. We visited those in February. We didn't receive any direct comments during those meetings on the, on the substance of the amendments, and then because, you know, again, these are state-mandated changes, we didn't take an, there was no advisory recommendation either. So with that, staff recommends that the planning commission make the following recommendations to the board supervisors: to determine that you notice of exemption is adequate and complete, and to approve the ordinance amending chapters three, five, six, and seven of the zoning code. That concludes my presentation, and staff are available for any additional questions.
I am still seeing on HCD's page, 80% is low income of AMI? So is there...
Fine, I'll double-check.
Yeah, let's, let's just double-check that number so we don't codify an even harder limit to reach.
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll double-check, and if, and we can make that change before we go to the board for final approval. Thank you for pointing that out.
Further questions for staff this evening?
Just more of a procedural questions. If, because laws change year after year, but does HCD guidance provide us, if it's not specific into the bill or the law that was signed, does HCD guidance provide us for a specific amount of length of time for our county to be in compliance and making the actual administrative changes? Or do you foresee us kind of just batching it every four years, very similar to kind of what we did right now?
I don't, I don't, I haven't seen any guidance from HCD that says there's a certain amount of time we're required to approve it. I know that we're, now that we're more staffed up, Wendy and the zoning administration team, I recently rotated teams, are looking to do these annually. So we put out an interim guide on January 1st every year, trying to capture as much of, as many of these laws that were approved, you know, during the previous legislative session, so that at least there's an interim tool to use while we work on these amendments. But I believe we're hoping to get on to a more annual schedule, so, you know, hopefully by the end of this year, we'll see, you know, the 2024 package and so on. So we'll stay, we don't want a four-year gap, four, six-year gap that we saw this time. That's not the goal.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So follow-up question from that. Does that mean I can throw away the 130-page interim guide?
We're gonna, we're gonna take out the ones you recommend, you, if you would like to recommend approve. Once the board, if the board adopts, we'll take those out, and it'll only be about 60 pages, so we'll cut it in half at least, yeah.
Moving in the right direction.
More of an editorial than a, than a question. Hopefully, it'll migrate to a question or evolve. First of all, excellent job on the analysis and summary. Really appreciate you walking us through each of these various chapters. Obviously, these are more kind of state edicts that come down asserting local control and local decision-making with regard to the hydrogen fuel. I'm only cognizant of regionally the one in Yolo County, West Sacramento. Has there been, to your knowledge, applications for hydrogen fuel retail in the, in the county as of late?
Not to my knowledge, but I know that staff over here who are more on the application side may have, may have heard some more recently than, than me.
Yeah. Because I'd imagine these are, these are more complex, mechanical, electrical, not only in the production but in the storage, and I, our, our ability to regulate these is now narrowly scoped to just health and safety. And I would imagine that the complexities of hydrogen for the storage and retail of it may have some nuances that don't perfectly align with a traditional gas station. I'm just trying to get my head kind of wrapped around where it appears we have very little, if at all, any leniency there on reviewing those applications outside health and safety.
So my recollection is that we've had one come in, and it was for fleet fueling. So realistically, the scope of that is pretty narrow as it stands because, because realistically, they're not proposing to have a lot of other uses go with it. they're not proposing to have a lot of other uses go with it. So we have one, we're reviewing it. We are making sure that our review complies with the regulations in the state law. So it has been a pretty narrow review of that.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. One last question, just with regard to sidewalk vending. I know that there are some industries or at least some businesses that have elected to do cashless base commerce with their customers. Is that something that we can or have examined with certain, like with street vending, just to avoid that hand cash? I know they're, they're, they're having to adhere to county health and food safety handling certifications, but you have a single person there who's manning the, the till, cooking the food, preparing the food and doing the transaction. And I'm just wondering if there's a way of encouraging kind of a cashless system there?
It's an excellent question. I do not know the answer to that.
Okay.
So outside of what we, you know,
Sure.
kind of planning, I know that the county environmental management, EMD, they're calling these now compact mobile food operations. I think I got the acronym right. And so I know that they have a website with the FAQ and there's an application that require to get a permit. I was scrolling through it. I didn't see anything on there about cashless. I didn't review everything. But I think it's definitely, you know, something that the, if the health department wanted to move that direction. I'm sure they could. I, I do think there is some, there's some restraints in the state law on where we can regulate and what we can't. And they're, they are also pretty much limited to kind of health and safety concerns rather than permitting compliance. So I don't know where, I don't know if cashless kind of, you can make the case, you know, this would help reduce unpermitted ones, which is a health and safety concern.
It was a general question, but yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Any other questions for staff this evening?
Chair, Rethal, just, I will say on this density bonus issue and the applicability of SEQA, no one in our office at county council has had a chance to specifically address this letter. It looks like it came in on Friday. So if you don't want to let that just go without a more detailed response, I would say your options are, you know, and I know staff wants to move this forward, but your options are you can continue this and you can ask me and I can go back and take a, take a hard look at this and come back in two weeks and provide a response. Or if the decision of the commission is to recommend approval and it moves on to the board, then someone, then someone in our office is going to look at this and advise the board on whether or not we see an issue here. So you can trust that process to go forward, or you can hold things up here if you feel like you want to get a, get a specific response before you take action.
Thank you for that clarification.
I'm still not disagreeing with anything staff said in explaining their position on the amendment.
Understood. Yeah, I, I think from my standpoint, I think you guys probably know where I stand, but I can also communicate that to the board also, that if we have the opportunity to leave it in discretionary review, that is preferable to me. And I don't mind, you know, hearing what your review is after a couple of weeks and letting the board know and that it's clear. Here, if you turn up and say, oh, this is not part of the analysis, or this isn't required and it does actually trigger SEQA, and where we have to adjust the code slightly, then I'm comfortable with that process.
Yeah. Either way, it's gonna get, it's gonna get a look.
Perfect. Anyone else want to hold it up for a couple of weeks? All right. I'm happy to, well, let's talk about public comment first before I move anything.
And we're good this evening. No public comments on this item.
Perfect. We'll go ahead and close public comment. I'm happy to move the staff recommendation and advance this to the board.
Second.
Any further comments? All right. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Sporha.
Yes.
Conklin.
Yes.
Corona Sabaniano.
Yes.
Devlin.
Hi.
And Rethal.
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Thank you.
Now we just have 60 more pages of interim guidance to work on. Oh, we're trusting the process. All right. Please call. We'll move to the contested portion of the agenda now. Please call item number two.
And so your item number two this evening is a community plan amendment, a rezone tentative subdivision map, conditional use permit, special development permit and design review. And it's located at 6416, 6420, and 6422 Hazel Avenue, approximately 1,400 feet north of Greenback Lane and east of Myron Way in the Orangevale community. And the environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration.
Can I get the presentation up, please?
And Chair, I just wanted to make a
Thank you.
notification that I did meet with the applicants prior to this meeting.
Perfect. We'll take then opportunity while we get the presentation up. So Commissioner Conklin met with the applicant team. I also met with the applicant team out on site. Anyone else?
I also met with the applicant team.
I also met with the applicant team virtually.
All right. Now we got that on the record and we got the presentation up.
Yes, we have the presentation up. So thank you. This project is called Hazel Ridge. It is PLMP 2022-88. And it is located at 6416, 6420, and 6422 Hazel Avenue. The site is approximately 1,400 feet north of Greenback Lane, and it is directly east of Myron Way in the Orangevale community. The site does contain one single-family residence. The other properties are vacant. That site was constructed in the 1950s. The site itself is relatively flat. It has a variety of native and non-native trees, and it does generally slope to the southeast towards the location of the drainage basin. So this property currently has RD5 community plan designation and a RD5 zoning district. You will see that the surrounding land uses to the north and south are also RD5. To the east, it's RD3, and to the west, it is RD5. So as we said, there is one existing residence that was constructed in 1950. There was previously a tentative subdivision map that was approved on the site. This was 2004. And it was to develop it into 20 lots consistent with the RD5 zoning district. That map did expire and it was not recorded, hence where we are today. A couple other things to note is that this property was briefly included in the countywide rezone project. And the purpose of that project was to find additional sites to meet the county's RENA, which is our regional housing needs assessment. So for a brief period of time, it was on that list with the potential of being rezoned to RD30, but this entitlement came forward and so it was dropped off of that because we had an active entitlement on there. The other thing to note is that this is an infill site with one point of access to Hazel Avenue. So you don't see that there's any stub streets or any other means of access other than Hazel for this project. The other thing that we would note is that this is a community plan amendment and rezone of the approximately 4.63 gross acres from the existing RD5 designations to an RD10 land use designation and an RD10 zoning district. However, the actual density of this project is about four, I mean, I'm sorry, 7.6 acres. So it's actually closer to an RD7 product than an RD10 product. The thing about it is when, because it's actually over RD7, they had to rezone to RD10. But it is consistent with the general plan in the LU5 for density. So that's where we are with that. We are also looking at a tentative subdivision map to divide that site into 23 single-family residential lots, 12 half-plex lots, and a drainage basin for that total of 36 lots in the RD10 zoning district. It also requires a conditional use permit because in our zoning code, if you have more than 10 half-plex lots, it does require use permit through a total of 12. And then we are also looking at a special development permit, which would allow this project to deviate from some of our development standards. And in addition, because this is an RD10 product, there's also a design review that is associated with it that went to our DRAC. So when you're looking at the entitlement request, the special development permit is going to allow this to deviate from some of our development standards. So for those half-plex lots, the standard is basically 3,500 square feet for a corner lot, and then it is 3,000 square feet for an interior lot. So some of the lots are not meeting this. They're actually smaller than that. I think the corner lots, actually all six of them are going to deviate. And then when you're looking at the interior, five of the six deviate. Another one of our requirements is that you can allow for like up to two lots to deviate from not having the public road frontage, which is Hazel. And then if you get beyond that, it triggers a special development permit. So because all of these lots are off of a private drive, it does require a special development permit for that design aspect. Another thing to note is that they are asking to deviate from our front yard setbacks. Typically, it's 20 feet. They're asking for a 12 and a half foot for the lots. Another thing is the rear yard. So they are asking universally for a smaller rear yard than we would allow, even though some of the lots will technically meet it. Another thing is driveways. So typically for a driveway that's on a street, it's 19 feet. For a side yard driveway, it's 20 feet. So in the particular instance that some of the half-plex lots have their driveway accessing off of a side street yard, they are asking for 19 universally. And in some cases, it is 20. So that is the extent of the special development permits that are being requested here. This project has gone through SEQA review. It has been subject to an initial study and a mitigated negative declaration. It was released for public review at the end of March, March 29th, to be precise. And that public review will be complete on April 29th, prior to the board hearing. And then the impacts that are discussed in this are trees. So there's the loss of native trees and the native tree canopy. So they're, and the non-native tree canopy. So they're going to have to mitigate for that. A variety of nesting birds, cultural resources, even though it is discussed in the environmental document, any noise-related impacts are actually conditions of approval. So those are in our conditions. And then there is a discussion of air quality, greenhouse gases. So staff was able to determine that the project would result in a less than significant impact with the result of, with the application of mitigation measures. Okay, so we're finally on to the tentative subdivision map. So as you can see, this is the layout. This is Hazel. The applicant is proposing a gated subdivision, and then it accesses through the driveway here. And then there are other driveways, and this does meet fire and DOT standards. And then you can see that the drainage basin, it, sorry, is also down here in this corner. One of the things that we wanted to point out is the elevations or the house sizes associated with this. The houses in the subdivision are proposed to have basically four sizes. So you're starting at 1,504 square feet. You're going up to almost 2,500 square feet. And then down in the bottom right-hand corner, that is the half-plex design. Again, just showing the elevations as they are proposed by the applicant. This again is the landscaping plan. So what you are seeing associated with this project is there will be landscaping along the wall, along Hazel, and then on the interior of the project, you will see landscaping, especially trees associated with the lots that are proposed. So this project did go to the Orangevale CPAC on September 5th of 2023. There were only two members of the CPAC present, so there was not a quorum. So when that happens, we allow the public to speak, make their comments, and then the CPAC members do not vote, but they are able to voice their opinion on a project. So that is what did occur. There were about 30 members of the public in attendance, and 16 members did speak in opposition to the proposed project. And they did have issues regarding increased noise, traffic and pedestrian impacts. They felt there were too many deviations from the county standards and that it was generally inconsistent with the surrounding area. After the testimony was given, the CPAC members did provide their opinion on the project, and their opinion was that it did not fit well into the rural lifestyle of Orangevale. The project did also go to DRAC, which is the Design Review Advisory Committee, for their determination on and recommendation on whether or not this was consistent with the design guidelines. The DRAC did recommend to the planning commission and then the board of supervisors that it was in compliance with the design guidelines. So as far as our project analysis goes, is that they are proposing the 23 single-family lots, the 12 half-plex lots, and the drainage lots. This does result in an overall density of the project of 7.6 acres, which is consistent with our general plan designations and overall that RD10 zoning district. The project does propose a private street network. That private street network has been reviewed by the fire district and DOT, and it is consistent. There is one access to Hazel Avenue. And in our staff report, because the neighbors were concerned about the driveway and accessing onto Hazel, we did put in some additional analysis as to the gate, the setback of the gate, and the proposal for a turnaround. One thing that we did note in our staff report as well is that DOT has reviewed the requirements, a traffic study, and improvements associated with a signal, which is one of the things that the neighbors had asked for, was not warranted in this case. So it has been reviewed by DOT on a couple of occasions, and they find that it does not meet the warrants for having a signal at that driveway. So, and then the other thing of note is obviously there is a private onsite drainage basin, and there was a drainage study that was provided to DWR. DWR reviewed it and accepted it. And then they have provided additional conditions on this project. Those are 53 to 68, to ensure the project is in compliance with the county's floodplain management ordinance. So staff's recommendation for this project is that the planning commission recommend to the board of supervisors approval and of the multiple entitlements. We would, we would ask that the planning commission recommend that the board of supervisors determine that the environmental analysis prepared pursuant to SEQA is adequate and complete, that the board adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, that they adopt the resolution to amend the Orangevale community plan, that they approve the rezone ordinance, that they approve the tentative subdivision map subject to the findings and conditions of approval, that they approve the conditional use permit subject to the findings and conditions of approval, that they approve the special development permit, again, subject to the findings and conditions of approval, and that they find the project in substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines. Okay. So that concludes staff's presentation. I would like to note that you did additionally receive some public comments from members of the public regarding this project today. And then the applicant team, including their engineers, here to discuss and answer any questions you may have on the project. And then we also have Cameron Chu from DOT if you had any traffic-related questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Mueller. Questions for staff this evening?
Questions for staff this evening?
Thank you very much for an excellent presentation and briefing. Quick question regarding the efforts for mitigating sound levels. I see here an eight-foot sound wall being proposed fronting Hazel Avenue, but then I also had read a six-foot-tall fence around the perimeter. Just don't want to get the two confused.
Correct. So what you're looking at is along Hazel, there is an approximately eight-foot masonry wall that's located there. And then around the perimeter of the property, you're generally looking at a six-foot wood fence.
Okay, got it. And that proposed sound barrier, that mason wall, brick wall, will bring the decibel levels, I think it was 45 decibels or less, that's the threshold I think we're trying to seek out?
That's the interior threshold. So in the conditions of approval, we have actually carried forward some conditions related to noise specifically as it relates to the impact of the noise on the project. And let me find them really quickly for you. I think they're like five, six, and seven in your packet. Yeah, it's six, sorry, it's six, seven, and eight. And so there is a specific requirement as to the height and construction of that masonry wall. And then there is construction methods, which would reduce the interior to that 45-decibel level. And then obviously, because of the nature, we have it so that there is mechanical heating and cooling, so that people don't have to open their windows.
Great, thank you very much.
Other questions for staff this evening?
Can you talk a little bit about what normally goes into an RD-10 district? And just along, you know, I know we talk about these projects that are duplexes or half-plexes or zero-lot lines, you know, all these different types of products that are out there, that are somewhere in the middle of, somewhere between single-family, high-density, and an apartment complex, like you talked about going to RD-30.
Right. So generally, in our zoning code, we have our, what we consider to be our lower-density zones, and those are generally like the RD-1 through the RD-10. So RD-10 is like the top end of what is consistent with the low-density residential general plan designation. So generally, what you're looking at is maxing out at 10 dwelling units per acre there. And to some extent, that does get you more into a project where you're either talking about like a really small lot, single-family, or a duplex project. That's generally what you're kind of going to get with that. And then when you get into more of our 15 and above, that's our medium-to-high-density residential, and that's where you're most likely going to get into like an actual apartment-type project.
And is there, I'm just looking at like the special development with the lot, saying, well, the lots don't meet the minimum square footage. And I'm just trying to figure out, like, could you do an RD-10 project with those minimum lots that are stated and include the infrastructure needed for the community? Because they're already like, private streets are smaller, like, and we're still having these exceptions. So I'm just curious if staff feels like these are achievable in this sort of?
I think Todd has an opinion on that more so, and he would like to share that with you.
Sure, I'll jump in on that one. Commissioner Rathel, Todd Smith, Planning Director. It's an interesting question in the sense that we see a lot more of these types of projects coming before hearing bodies such as yourselves. And what I mean by that is different products that we haven't seen in a long time, duplexes, townhomes, things of that nature, that are generally more dense than we're used to seeing. When our development standards have certain, obviously very specific criteria in them, you're seeing a lot more special development permits, right? And this has kind of been in the back of our minds as we're thinking about what our zoning code development standards are. We don't have a ton of flexibility built into those development standards. We actually had a very good workshop at the board about two weeks ago on this topic, related to the efforts that the county can make relative to increasing housing production, particularly in infill areas. And then even more specifically for this missing middle housing type, that a duplex or smaller homes really fit. And the board direction to us as staff was to go and amend the zoning code's development standards relative to this particular issue, whether it's lot sizes, whether it's certain setbacks, for example, among a whole host of other topics. It's really worth a listen if you get a chance. All that to say, we have received that board direction and are going to proceed to amend the zoning code. But directly to your question, we have been seeing a lot more of these types of products that necessitate, based on the code as it's written, a number of special development permits.
Thank you. Appreciate your work on that. Other questions for staff this evening?
Not really. Oh, did you have a question? Oh, no. Not much question, just more of a comment. I, you know, I've, I'm looking at the project, and, you know, it looks to transform a relatively follow land into, into a development that'll help with our housing shortage. The project, as I'm going through the staff's analysis, you know, will, impacts to the Orangevale Community Plan are less than significant. Impacts related to VMT are less than significant. Their, the design review, I've seen the renderings. The homes seem to be consistent, if not complementary, and aesthetically to the local community. These are the kind of the projects that we need in that community. And I'm, when it's appropriate, happy to move the agenda item. Thank you.
All right. No other questions for staff this evening? All right, we'll invite the applicant up at this time, and we'll get the entire applicant team sworn in. If you guys are going to comment or answer questions, if you could stand and raise your right hand, and our clerk will get you sworn in.
Thank you all so much. So if you'd raise your right hand, please, and the appropriate responses, I do. The, I am so sorry. Sometimes I just get tongue-tied when it comes to the, to the oath. So, so the, please raise your right hand, and the appropriate responses, I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is a truth? So if you got it, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Okay, if you'll state your name for the record and make the statement, I have been sworn.
Ryan Hooper, I have been sworn.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Rathel, members of the Planning Commission. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm Ryan Hooper with Thatch &amp; Hooper, representing the Hazel Ridge applicant. We've got the whole team here today. Jim Luce is the project applicant, his wife Nancy Luce, daughter Michelle Luce. Got the whole Luce team here. Jim McVey is the project development partner, and then Kent Baker here as well, a project engineer. Hopefully with this entire group, we could answer any questions you may have. By way of background, I think that staff did an incredibly good, detailed job, so I'm going to basically stick to just some high-level points that I wanted to make. Basically, this is the kind of project the county says that it wants. As Todd Smith just mentioned a minute ago, that the board convened an entire session regarding how to make this type of project, make these infill projects more feasible. You heard a little bit about deviations. Deviations are there as tools in the current code in order to allow an infill project like this. Infill, infill's not easy. Everybody says it. Everybody says they want it, but it's not easy. And so you don't have a blank canvas, and these deviations allow you to kind of bob and weave and give you the flexibility to put together an attractive plan. We have, as I think Leanne mentioned earlier, while RD-10 is the zoning designation that we're seeking, we're less than that. We're 7.6, we're just over what would be an RD-7. But I think the other important thing here, not to pass over, is the fact that while we may be seeking a density of 7.6 units an acre, it wasn't too long ago the county was in here wanting to do RD-30, up to 130 units. And so we see this as a great compromise and a middle ground. You heard a little bit about traffic. Cameron Chu is, again, is here to answer any questions on that topic. But with that, I would just say we're here to answer any questions you have and urge you to follow staff's recommendation of approval. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hooper. Questions for the applicant team this evening?
Just one quick one, sir. And thank you for inviting me to a meeting last week, Mr. Hooper. You had mentioned about historically, the parcels on this project had a planned, not multifamily, but apartment complex. That might have been spoken through before historically, that the community members might have not been so happy about. Can you just speak a little bit about that and how that ended up kind of changing gears to this project that we have now?
Sure, that's a great question. I'm happy to speak to that. So the county has to set aside high-density residential acreage to meet its RENA requirements under state law. It's an uncomfortable position for a lot of jurisdictions, because you're going to make people unhappy. The county identified this site as being on its RENA list, and under that designation, would have had an RD-30 designation, which would have allowed, based on the acreage, plus or minus 130 units. So quite significant. As Leanne pointed out, that project only stopped because of our application coming online, which effectively put that county proposal off.
Can you address the private streets? Sometimes when people move in, they don't recognize the street in front of them as private. And so when they run into issues later on down the road, they call the county.
Sure.
To sort that out. Will there be an HOA just with this neighborhood, or how will those be maintained going forward?
Yes, as mentioned, it's going to be a gated private development with private streets. The private streets will be maintained by the HOA, so it'll be the HOA, not the county that gets those calls.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant team this evening? All right, thanks, Mr. Hooper. All right, with that, we'll move on to public comment this evening.
And no public comments for this item.
Not online either?
Well, we, remember, we no longer have online or remote public comments, so they need to come into chambers to make their public comments.
Great to hear that update. Perfect.
I know, right? Yeah.
All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment.
All right.
And no public comments to address? So I know, would anyone like to kick us off this evening? I'll get us started this evening. So this project, when I looked at it, you know, an upzone on an infill project always makes me a little nervous. And once I met with the applicant team and saw what the concessions were around the boundaries of the project, and how much thought had gone into making sure the project had as little impact as possible on the neighbors and on the residents surrounding the project, I was pretty happy. And looking at, you know, the proximity to major thoroughfares, the surrounding densities, I do feel it's consistent with the development around it, especially looking at it as RD-7.6 instead of RD-10. So I'm comfortable with moving staff recommendation.
I would go ahead and second that. I think this is a pretty good project when you look at the totality of the difficulties of building housing, meeting the housing needs, building affordable housing, and you have projects like this that come across and have elements of affordable by design to I think this is a very solid project, and I'm happy to second that.
Any further discussion or comments this evening on the project?
Chair, I'd just like to say that I read all of the comments and the letters provided by some of the neighbors that might have brought up some of the concerns. And I physically drove there during commute hours, and I wholeheartedly feel confident that the analysis provided by staff, the applicant, and our DOT team accurately shows that while, in the face of it, there may be some unforeseen or some foreseen traffic additions, that I don't believe that it would trigger, you know, a full-on traffic analysis, nor that it would impede the process and flow of that arterial. So with that said, I'm happy to support.
Thank you. Will you please call the roll?
Yes. Members Borha?
Yes.
Conklin?
Yes.
Kona Salvagnano?
Yes.
Devlin?
Yes.
And Rathel?
Yes.
And the motion carries for staff recommendation.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
And with that, we'll move on to item number three, the Planning Director's Report.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I don't have a lot to report on tonight, but I do want to mention that, again, that Housing and Infill Workshop, it was at the board on April 10th, a special Wednesday session. It's worth going back and hearing the discussion if you have an opportunity. I can also send a link, or you can find it on the board's agenda page, actually, all the materials that we put together. Generally, the board was supportive of a lot of the ideas that staff put together relative to development standards, design guidelines, amendments, really looking to streamline housing production, as well as emphasizing the need for really high-quality infill development in the county. And so we're going to be going back, amongst other things, taking a look at our zoning code for those specific items. There are some pieces of that that would change the level of hearing body for some certain aspects. As an example, the code currently has a minor-use permit provision for apartments of more than 150 units. The board gave direction to eliminate that, so as one thing that we're going to be taking a look at. Obviously, those zoning code amendments would come to the Planning Commission when we go through the work to update them and get your feedback on it. That's probably several months out, but we are going forward to take a resolution of intention back to the board so that we can memorialize the feedback that we got and try to keep our guardrails as we go through the zoning code amendment process. Other things that were discussed at that workshop were related to financial incentives. Obviously, the code piece is a regulatory incentive, but a financial incentive, and my, one of my peers in the County Engineering Division talked a lot about some of the financial incentives that we're thinking about doing. I'm not the expert, I can't speak to a lot of detail on that, but the board did give direction to try to establish roughly a $5 to $10 million impact fee offset program. And we're putting into, putting a lot of work into the math and what that accounts for, for the county impact fees. And we'll be reporting back on that at a future date. I think that's it for now. Oh, sorry, one more thing that was really interesting. The board did also give direction to proceed with what we call an infill coordinator, at least that's how we presented it to them. This person would be solely responsible for focusing on infill in Sacramento County, primarily the commercial corridors that we have, I think 14 or 15 of them in the general plan. And so we're going to be kicking off a new recruitment for that position. It's a principal planner-level position in the very near future. And we'll also be working on backfilling Jessica's spot at the same time. So that's it for my report tonight.
Quick, quick questions on that. It seems to me that drainage is always this, the contentious, or one of the contentious items for infill projects, and it also seems like the critical path, at least, you know, talking to some other, talking to some applicants over the years, I consistently hear that it seems like that's the critical path item, right? That it's a thing that takes the longest to work out at infill. Is there any thought on how to, or is that being part of this process of how to speed that critical path along?
Yes, and I would say that it's not just a critical path on infill projects. Some of our bigger master plan areas that are much more complex, it's a challenge there as well. Obviously, scale matters in the scope of hydrology analysis, but I do know that our Department of Water Resources have been going through their individual processes, taking a fresh look at how they can improve relative to timelines. Obviously, there's, they're a piece of the land use entitlement process. We want to make sure that the projects aren't adversely affecting their neighbors, and that's important. But they are taking a close look at that.
Excellent. And then the other thing, just, you guys are probably already doing this, but just to confirm, we do seem to have a number of high- to confirm, we do seem to have a number of high-quality developers in this town home duplex, this missing middle type of property that we didn't have, you know, 10 years ago in the region. And I'm just hoping they're being brought into the consultative process to try to, because to me, that's, that's where we find the starter home of tomorrow, right? Is really in this missing middle.
Yeah, so I'll speak to that as well. And actually, upcoming in the next couple of months, we have a preview of our infill program. As part of that effort, the infill program effort, we did a, well, not these guys, but other folks worked on a really significant amount of outreach, not just to the major home builders, but all the, I'll say, the smaller ones, the ones that we see a lot of apartments or missing middle type, to get their feedback as to what are the changes they would like to see from a regulatory perspective to help incentivize them build more of those products. And that engagement is expected to continue as we go through these, these updating, the code amendments that we're going to be working on as a result of the infill workshop.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. That moves us to miscellaneous scheduling items.
I'll keep talking just for a brief minute. The next couple of hearings, we've got two items on May 6th. May 20th, we've got just two items, which are both county-initiated. One is the countywide regional housing needs allocation rezone program that's now moving into the hearings. And then we have the five-year capital improvement plan review. That's something that happens every year around this time. It was just at the Board, not last week, but the week before, to get processed through to the Planning Commission. That's a general plan consistency review. And then June, we've got two and three items at both, at least looking out, we're targeting two and three items at both hearings.
When you say May 6th, you mean the 13th, right? No?
No.
Am I off now?
Yeah, it's the 6th. I think the holiday threw us off.
Holiday threw us off? Okay. I'll update my calendar.
Good thing we're doing this miscellaneous scheduling.
Exactly. All right. Public comments?
Public comments.
And does anybody need to report, and they're not going to be at future meetings?
No, I was just, no, I was just to clarify. So in May, we only have one meeting, May 6th?
We have May 6th and May 20th.
Okay. Thank you.
There is a 50% chance that I might be absent at the May 6th meeting.
With that, we're going to go ahead and adjourn. Have a good night, everyone.